Good evening. I will now call to order the Chesterfield Township Planning Commission meeting on January 16th, 2024. I will call the roll. Mr. Miller is here. Mr. LaBelle?
Here.
Mr. Demink?
Here.
Mr. Leonard?
Here.
Mr. Renault?
Here.
Mr. Jaworski?
Here.
Mr. Klar.
Here.
All those present, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Approval of minutes of prior meetings. I will make a motion to approve the meetings of December 5th, 2023. Support? Motion by Mr. Miller, supported by Mr. Demink. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the agenda. I will make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Support.
We have motion by Mr. Miller, supported by Mr. Renault. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Public hearing. We have one public hearing tonight. Res zoning number 370 requesting to rezone 1.883 acres of property located on the northeast corner of 21 Mile Road and Sugar Bush Road, R1B residential 201 professional office, parcel ID 15-09-29-452-001. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Miller, supported by Mr. LaBelle. All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne, you want to go over that rezoning request?
I'll defer to Jonathan since he, if that's all right.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, Jonathan.
That's okay. So this application in front of you was previously in front of you for rezoning to commercial. The applicant was looking to do some type of retail or gas station development and the planning commission after a public hearing had recommended denial to the township board. The applicant had decided to amend the request for the rezoning. So what's currently being requested is the corner to be rezoned to 01 office. Under the original application, it was for the whole entire parcel to be rezoned, which was, which the whole parcel is 2.88 acres. This request is for 1.8 acres to be rezoned to 01, which is professional office. There isn't a concept plan with this one. There is a sketch showing, you know, the limits of where the residential lots would be and where the office is proposed to be. Those would meet the zoning ordinance requirements and then any, any development on the site for office would have to come back in front of the planning commission for either site plan or special land use review. You know, the letter that I provided the planning commission is a supplement to the review provided by Giffords Webster back the original time around. You know, a lot of the facts to this haven't changed. Just some of the, some of the requests changed. You know, for example, you know, before it was stated that it wasn't an extension of an existing zoning district. That changes now because across Sugar Bush is the bank, which is zoned office. So this would be an extension of that zoning. And also, you know, one of the questions that, you know, the planning commission is tasked with considering from, from that review is whether there's a large amount or any amount of property available under that zoning district. There's not a large of 01 in the township in general and what there is, is, is already developed. So those are just some of the, some of the facts that changed from the last one. Everything else from that original time around still stands. And as I said, the applicant decided to change their request. You know, there was a lot of feedback from the surrounding residents that wasn't favorable to it being commercial. And, you know, there was some concern raised by the planning commission that, you know, a bunch of residential driveways at that intersection was not ideal either. So this is kind of a compromise in the middle where you have, you know, residential lots, additional residential lots going in between the existing residential and then a less intense office district on the hard corner. So that's what's in front of you tonight. Again, this would be up to the planning commission to review and make your recommendation to the township board and I can answer any questions.
Please, yeah. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Dave Kena. I'm the owner of the property of the 2.88 acres on the north east corner of 21 Sugar Bush. I have abandoned the C3Z zoning change and I did go to 01 on the westerly 1.88 acres of the property, which would be the least invasive rezoning of the property and also keep two 100-foot wide residential lots on the easterly portion of the property. I don't think it's necessary to say we go over all the other stuff I did last time. So I'd just like to touch on a few things that are a concern on the R1B is continuity of traffic and points of conflict close to the intersection, public health and safety and welfare. There are no crosswalks going to that property by the intersection. The traffic stop and go noise wouldn't work well with residential right next to it. And plus, 01 is more consistent with the other three corners on the intersection. And number six, I don't believe it'll be very financially, I think it'd be a financial failure trying to put house right on the corner of that property. Now, I'm not here trying to do anything out of the ordinary. If this property were located down Sugar Bush a little ways, I wouldn't be here trying to get it rezoned. I would just do it all residential. But there can't be one civic-minded person that would look at that corner of that property right by that intersection and say, yes, this is a good place to put houses. That's my only concern. If it was, I would just do it. But I just don't see it. I think it'd be a failure if I tried. With that being said, I thank you for your time and I hope we can come up with a resolution on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll have opinion from the citizens. If you'd like to come up, state your name for the record. You have three-minute time limit.
Mr. Chairman, I also put the sign-in sheet on the table over there. So if multiple want to speak, they can go up ahead of time and sign in and it might speed the process up a little bit if they're interested.
Hello, name is Andrew Schloss. My wife and I were here last time. We are the owners of the property immediately next door to the Latin question. We were very adamantly opposed to the last request. But while we would prefer it to all be residential, the owner does bring up some valid points with the traffic and stuff at the corner. And we just wanted to say that if it is going to be rezoned, this is preferential to the prior option. So that's all I really have to say.
Thank you.
Should I sign in after? I just have a question and I'd like-
State your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Jan Opres. I live at Sugar Bush Farms. And I just would like to know in terms of where the driveway would be if this is rezoned office because of the way that people turn left there coming off of 21, there's, it's just constant. And just wondering if it could be a traffic or an accident waiting to happen there. Just a question.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. What our standard procedure is, is that we're, we'll write down all of the questions rather than answering them individually. And at the end, when the public is finished, one of us will answer all of the questions. And of course, if we miss one, remind us. But that's our standard procedure. And also, please address, we ask that everybody address the board and not address the audience. Thank you.
Good evening. Janice Young, Chesterfield. I don't really have a horse directly in this race. I do live in the community, so it is important to me and I do travel that, that intersection a lot. It is a better option than the C3 zoning. I would agree with that. My only concern is that in general, you know, we have a master plan that gets touted all the time that, you know, we're supposed to follow. We have zoning ordinances that are in place, we're supposed to follow. And a lot of times, we do give variances for these things. And my concern is just going forward. We have developers coming in and they purchase land or want to develop land and they want to put a square peg in a round hole and we keep letting them do that. And I just, just, I know there's other things that can happen with this property, like a planned unit development, which maybe everybody doesn't know what that means. But, you know, that could end up being townhomes, I think, apartments. I mean, it could be, I'm not quite sure. Maybe you guys could define that for us a little bit better. And I know, Mr. LaBelle, you had said at the zoning board of appeals for the proposed rezoning on, or the zoning variance at 23 and Grashit, that the size of the property created a hardship for that potential business. That's not our fault. That's not the township's fault, you know? And that ownership, when they, when those developers come in, they have to recognize that they're looking at an odd piece of property and that their business may not fit. And again, it's the square peg in a round hole situation. And as far as that, if it is going to be a professional office, you know, is there considerations? He didn't really provide anything tonight, but like lighting, signage, parking. Someone else mentioned the driveways. There's going to be two homes included in this. Are those driveways going to be off of Sugar Bush? I couldn't tell by his drawing where they would be. So that, that's a concern. And if one's going to be addressed on Sugar Bush and one on 21, that's what it looks like to me. That seems like it would be kind of odd for that one house to be there. But anyhow, those are just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Nobody else wants to speak? If not, I'm going to bring it back to the, to the board and we'll be done.
I'm Kirsten Thomas. I live right at the corner of 21 Sugar Bush as well. I'm also in favor of this versus the commercial. However, I wanted to know if, what, how open-ended is this office professional building? What can that entail? What different type of facilities can go in there? Would this just be a single-story building or would this, could this be multiple levels? And how would that be handled?
Mike Rayner, Chesterfield. Just in listening, I'm trying to visualize it in my mind. I'm just wondering, the property that continues to the lake beyond the proposed area that we're talking about, how much room do we have there and how is that zone? I'm kind of trying to picture how we're going to continue to Jefferson that way. That's really my only, I just kind of wondered how that, what else might end up going next to it since we've, we're starting it out. So I wonder what might be next. Thank you.
Teresa Delgado, also live in Sugar Bush Farms. And I'm just wondering, once this proposed office complex is built, will he come back again and say, oh, I'd like to rezon the rest of it? Still don't want to put houses there? And that's my question. Does he get to come back yet again and say, I want to change it again? To her point, round in a square. Thank you.
If not, I'm going to bring it back to us. Mr. Demink, do you have any comments?
I will just say, we just looked it up on GIS. The question was proposed, what is the property basically from anchor going down the firewell that's at vacant lot? Those who are all looking here at the GIS, those are all homes on it. And it's all plotted already. So nothing, nothing else can go in there. Whatever properties there is already zoned residential and there's homes on it. We just looked it up on GIS.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. We have a motion by Mr. Miller, supported by Mr. Carr. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Brokhardt, you have any comments?
Yes, thank you. Back in September, when we, when I first saw this, I made a motion to, to say no. It was supported and this, this commission went forward with, you know, with some, some thoughts that it wasn't consistent with the master plan, nor did we think the zoning request was compatible with the adjacent properties. I think, I think now that these changes have been made, I believe it's much more consistent with the master plan. And I think it is compatible with the extension of the adjacent properties. I think it's a much improved option that was brought forth today. So I, I don't really have any problems with what we've seen. Those are my only comments.
Thank you. Mr. Renault?
Yeah, we're just, I'd like to say, I agree with the residents here as far as this is a much better compromise to what it was, which is why I think we did, made the denial last time or recommended the denial. I agree with Mr. Burkhardt here. This is definitely a much more user-friendly format from what I can see. To answer the one question that we had from the crowd, some of it we can't answer because we do not have a concept plan yet. This is just for the zoning. Once they get to the part, if we, if this were to get approved, they'd have to come back to us, apply plans, the whole nine yards, and we have to approve that as well. So one of the things that we look at all the time when we get those plans, the driveways, flow of traffic, is it going to, you know, impede traffic in the area? All things we take into account. But we can't answer those questions. Do we actually see plans? But that would be step two.
Thank you. Yep. Mr. Carr?
Yeah, no, I'm comfortable with it. I think that the two residential lots create a nice little buffer for the other residences that are currently there. So I think it's a nice fit.
Thank you. Mr. Jaworski?
No, I think it's a better fit than the proposed, the other plan that was proposed, especially since every other corner is some kind of commercial. And that bank doesn't have a lot of traffic and like it was pointed out, and we got to look at the, the curb cuts later anyway. So we will address that, the traffic issue when that comes.
Thank you. Mr. Klonowski?
Yeah, I, I agree. I think it's, I think it's a pretty good fit. Just for the public's information, the master plan is a guide. It is not an absolute. And I've seen many times where something fits or is not maybe land used, maybe in the master plan. And that's why we have changes in our zoning. So that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Leonard?
Yeah, I agree with the, the audience, many of the opinions here and, and the board members, that this is compared to the other one, which everybody felt pretty strongly about the impact, audience and the board. This one has, seems to be a low impact. I think the hours, if it's office, are going to be much, much different than if you had a gas station, some other type of business. So I agree. I think this is a good compromise. I like the two residential lots to buffer the other property. And so it just seems like for traffic and many other things, it's going to be a, a good fit. So that's it.
Thank you. Mr. LaBelle?
I'd like to start with answering the one young lady's question about what could go in there. According to the, the 01 district, you can have professional offices, medical offices, uses permitted as a matter of right as required in the admitted, immediate abutting R1A, R1B, R1C, R2 districts. As far as a special land use, they can come in front of us for a special land use. It could be a daycare or nursery school, a funeral home or mortuary, or a PUD, a planned unit development. And also, I, I believe that, that the, the 01 district is basically a, an extension of the residential district. I'd like to read you this. "The 01 district is designed to provide a suitable environment of various, various types of offices, uses performing professional, administrative and related services occupantations." The district is also intended to provide a transition buffer between intense uses and/or major thoroughfares and a bus, abutting one fam, one-family residential neighborhoods." So, and I think that's what the gentleman is doing here, is he's putting a buffer between the residential and 21 Mile Road, Fairchild. With that being said, I am not opposed to this as well.
Thank you. The property that goes to Jefferson on 21, the rest of it is all residential, right? And what height, can they make a building there, Jonathan?
One story tall, 18 feet maximum.
One story tall. So I too am good with this proposal.
Mr. Chairman, just to expand on one more of those questions. PUD is listed, but the property wouldn't qualify. PUDs are required to be a minimum of five acres.
Thank you. So with that?
I got one more.
Go ahead.
Just to the applicant, just by looking at the way you have this split, can we take it that one driveway is going to be off just for the residential, for lot B and C? One, one driveway would be off Sugar Bush and other one would be off 21 by looking at the way this is?
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Haylen?
Yeah, I also did want to add that the approach permits ultimately come from McComb County Department of Roads. So you guys will, you know, look at it as in site plan for the, for office or something like that. But at the end of the day, for residential, they go right to the county for approach permit and they would still be required on a site plan to get an approach permit as well. And they have the ultimate say on where that, they do have standards, how far it's got to be from an intersection, how far it's got to be from another driveway. But that all goes through McComb County.
Thank you. Our normal procedure is to wait two weeks?
I say tonight.
I second that. Okay. Our normal procedure is to wait two weeks. So the next meeting is?
No, I said for tonight.
Oh, you want to vote tonight? Okay.
Make a motion to waive the rules and proceed tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We have a motion by- I'll support it. -Mr. Demink and supported by Mr. Brokhardt to vote tonight. With that, I would entertain a motion.
You got, got to take a vote on that.
We have to take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Named by Mr. Jaworski.
I'd like to make a motion then. I'd like to make a motion to rezon 1.883 acres of the property located on the northeast corner of 21 Mile Road and Sugar Bush Road, R1B 201. I see that this proposal is, is much more consistent with the master plan and the proposed rezoning request is an extension of the adjacent properties, a significantly improved option than that, what was introduced back in September.
And so recommendation to the board?
It's a recommendation to the board.
And read that person's.
And this would be parcel number ID 1509-29-452-001.
We have a motion by Mr. Brokhardt, support by Mr. Renault. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. So it, it is official. Item number six, our reviews. Our secretary, Rick, will do the items we can do in a timely manner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sign review J23-2482, Tom's Auto Glass, located at 48850 Grashit, requesting variances for a freestanding sign. It was tabled, postponed, making a decision back on 12/5 of 23. Mr. Phillips is here this morning, this afternoon?
Mr. Phillips?
Mr. Phillips, I have a question for you, if you don't mind. The, the first thing that I'd like to, if you, there is multiple variances we're going to talk about this evening. One thing that I want to make sure that we get an understanding of is with your new design, it, it shows 51.3-
Three.
-three square feet. We need a, a better understanding of how you came up with that dimension.
Can I pass out?
Sure.
Do you have a handout?
Sure. And I believe that the second variance is the height and the third variance is the location.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
I thought, Mr. LaBelle, we had kind of gone through all that. The first, the only thing outstanding was this issue. I-
Well, we haven't voted yet on anything, so.
Totally.
May I please explain the handout?
Yes, the, if you look at chapter 52 of signs, section 52.5, general regulations, part A, item one, reads, "For permanent signage, the sign shall constitute the entire area within a rectangular, rectangle or a sum of rectangles enclosing the extreme units of writing, representations, emblems, or any figure or similar character." Section A, again, item three, and this will wrap it up, "When an internally or externally illuminated sign has a non-reflective background, black background, the area that is outside is the extreme units described in 52 hyphen 5, A1 above, shall not count towards sign area." So that makes it pretty clear that anything outside those, that yellows, those yellow boxes is not signage, not considered counted as signage.
So on your diagram, I see a white box all around all of this. Is that white box going, going to exist or is it going to be a black sign all the way to the edge of the, of the structure?
Well, it's a black box with the exception of, I think what you were, the application that you received shows a white retainer around the sign. That's all. It does not light.
Well, I see a black box when then maybe coming in a couple of inches, I see a white, a white box and then it goes back to black again. So you're saying that white box doesn't exist?
The white box is plastic and it does not light. It's there, but it's not, it doesn't backlight. And the white box could be black if the board prefers.
It's, it's a white border. So you got a black border, then you got the white border, then the main, the main part of the black inside of that. I didn't understand the answer about the white border. That's going to be there or no?
The white border, if you look at the corners, is a pan. That's a pan face. So that pan sticks, it's not a flat face. The face has a little dimension to it. And the return on that face, the part that goes back, the sides, is white.
So what's the black on the very outside?
That's the outside, that's the sign cabinet.
That's part of the sign.
Mm-hmm. That is the cabinet. Mm-hmm. That is the cabinet.
This, this white return, can you make that go away?
Sure. I can make it black if you'd like it.
So, Mr. Palin, if you had a chance to take a look at this or not, we don't need to do anything then because if, from what he's saying and what he is drawing, there's no need for a variance, and that could be handled in the, internally.
The square footage would meet the requirement. It would, the variance would be for the height and for the location.
Are we also talking about the white border on the lower part of the sign too?
Yes.
There's a white border on the top and the bottom. All of that would be black.
If that's your preference, yes.
So if we look at it, it's all black except you get into some red?
Yes.
Around the Tom's Auto Glass, there's a border there that would still be whatever color that is?
Say again, I'm sorry?
The Tom's Auto Glass has a border around it as well.
Well, that would, that's a, yes, that would be, that'd be that silver color.
So that, so everything would be black except for the Tom's Auto Glass, the border, the truck accessories, and the wording underneath. Everything else would be black on the top.
Everything would be black with the exception of what's inside those yellow boxes you're looking at on the lower drawing there.
So the lower one, the same thing, you've got the red, the black, the Z-Bart logo, the Z-Bart name, the white border would be gone as well?
Be black.
No white border, top and bottom?
Nope, nope. If that's your preference.
Okay.
So there's, there's really no action as far as we're concerned with that variance. The second one is the, is the height of the sign.
The height of the sign we talked about last time was, I think we demonstrated, we had a handout that showed the Sprinter van parked at the front. Due to the tight, the property, there is no property. There's nowhere to go on that property. It's tight. It's on a curve. If we're forced to stay at eight feet, we will not, you'll never see the sign if it's a van of any nature, let alone a Sprinter van. A regular passenger van is going to block the sign. There'll be no signage at all heading north. This is an effort to try and get, the four feet is to try and lower the sign. We're lowering it, I think, eight feet. I thought, I'm sorry, I have these, I thought we went through this last time, and I'm glad to do it again. I think we're lowering at eight feet, and we're only asking, we're asking for a four-foot variance. Just to try and get some legibility because the site is so challenging.
Anybody have any questions on that before we move on to the third variance? Anybody, Mr. Dinkin? Or Mr. Brokhardt?
I'm okay, Mr. Renaud.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on the first variance this evening. And this motion is strictly for the height of the sign. It's nothing more than that. As part of my motion, there's, there's a number of questions that have to be answered as part of my motion. The first is, are there special circumstances or conditions such as existing buildings topographically, vegetarian, vegetation, sign structures, lot dimensions, and other materials, adjacent lots that would cause issue? In this instance, with the, with it being on the curve of the road, as well as, as the way that the parking lot is and the, and the location of the building, it does answer that question, and I agree with that. The second question is, strict enforcement of the provisions of the chapter would serve no useful purpose. And I agree with that. It does not serve any useful pers, purpose. The type of sign structure and the location proposed would not pose any significant risk to the public. It doesn't in any way cause any, any concern as far as the public. The, the next thing is, the benefit of the sign to the general public and/or applicant under the circumstance outweighs any risk to traffic safety and the township's desire to eliminate the accumulation of visual clutter. Because again, with the location of the, the building, the sign on the curve, the parking lot, it would enhance safety, in my opinion, because people won't be looking for that, that, that business. And the last thing is, a variance would be in the interest of the township, and not against the spirit of the intent of this chapter. I agree with that. It is in the interest of the township. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the first variance for the height of the sign from eight feet to 12 feet.
Support. We have a motion by Mr. LaBelle, supported by Mr. Leonard. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, so the, the next variance is the, the location of the sign. You want to go through again, Mr. Phillips?
Right now, the sign is 62 feet from the center line, and we're used to, well, we know it's 140 foot, correct, right of way at that spot? So it would be a 70-foot setback. We're at 67 feet. And that again is working, trying to shoehorn this sign in many of the things you just addressed, Mr. LaBelle, kind of addressed this as well. 60. Okay, so, I was, good. So 60. So we're in excess of the mandated setback at 67.
Mr. Chairman, so you're saying you're 67 feet from...
From the center line.
Right. So I was saying the half right of way is 60, so you should be 70 feet. So you would be three feet shy?
Oh, okay, okay.
Is that correct? You're 67 from the center?
What is, what is it? The right of way is what there? 120?
It's 120 total, right.
Oh, and then we need 10.
So yeah, you're 10 feet off the property line.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay. Yeah, so we need three, three feet to utilize existing poles. Again, we don't have the property to move back on.
Just, you know, looking at your site plan, looking at the restrictions, you know, is there, again, we're only looking at property. So, you know, when I look at your site, you know, really, there's nothing stopping you from putting a sign in the first parking spot. And if he wants to expand his parking a little bit further to the north, he can always do that to add additional spots. But in theory, there's really nothing stopping you from putting that sign in the first parking lot, first parking space, landscaping around it, and that'll eliminate your requirement to go 12 feet high in it, and it'll get you greater than 70 feet from the center line of Greshit. I'm, you know, I'm just throwing it out there. I mean, we're not supposed to give recommendations, but I figured I'd at least throw that out there because you're trying to put it in the same spot, but nothing says you have to put it in the same spot. You have a property, you're allowed to have a sign that meets our ordinances. It can, it can adjust locations. It doesn't have to be in the same spot that it's been there for 50, 60 years. Just, again, I don't have the measurements, but just looking at it, by putting it in that first spot, you eliminate the requirement to be 12 feet high, and again, you'll, you'll be greater than the right of way distance. He loses a parking spot, but he can always add those parking spots to the north if he wanted to expand his concrete a little bit. That would be up to him, but I'm just saying it's an alternative that, you know, can be done. What's that?
The, my turn? Thank you. The parking space you're referring to, Mr. Carr, would that be the first, the one immediately south of the sign?
Yeah, so around the, yeah, for, so there's nothing locked in.
Then any vehicle that parks in the next south parking spot there, which consistently there are vehicles parked out there, there is no parking at, at that site. It's extremely, if you've been there, it's tight, tight, tight. So we, I can't imagine losing a parking spot.
To not set precedences for everybody to come in over the next several years, you, once the ordinance does take an effect, I think in whatever, 2026, 2027, so I'm always very open to variances, when they're the right fit, and when we've exhausted all options to not meet our ordinances. That's all. So I'm totally open to them. I've, you know, voted many times on ordinances, but it's when I think it's the right fit and it's truly a constraint. In this case, I think, not seeing the numbers, as an architect, I'm just looking, saying, you know, it can, it looks like it can be moved and you can still meet the requirements and, you know, what the intent of the ordinance is. That's all.
Isn't part of the city, isn't part of the whole ordinance, is the whole planning review, isn't parking a huge consideration always? I mean, this site has no parking, none. Now we're talking about taking away a parking space? And we're going to put a sign eight feet high right next to where a truck and car guaranteed, and most of the traffic there is trucks. That's their business. You're going to, now we want to park a truck right next to a sign that's only eight feet tall? I mean, we literally are out of business. Anything northbound on Greshit will be turning around and coming back.
Right, so it's always going to be open to the north, so you don't have that issue at all. And then coming from the, the north...
Coming from the south.
Because, so when you're going northbound, it's wide open. Nothing's in front of it. And when you're going southbound, because it's angle, the road angles this way, in theory, it's going to be open, the sign will be more open than it currently is technically. That's how I look at it. I mean, from a, you know, of course, you can always see the visuals, but I still think it's going to be, it's still going to be a, I think it's a better placement than what you currently got, but that's just, again, that's just me looking at the site. That's all. But I'm flexible. Thank you. Anybody else?
Respectfully, don't understand how it could be more, or visible at all heading north. It's going to be hidden.
Well, I think right now, at 12 feet, a Sprinter van parked in front of it's going to block the sign.
No, I demonstrated in the, in the past handout.
No, a Sprinter van, if right now, if it's only three-foot base, which is what you got, okay, Sprinter van is what, eight, nine feet? So how does, if your sign's only 12 feet tall, how does it not?
Tom's, I demonstrated the last time I was here, that Tom's Auto Glass is clearly visible, the name, the destination people are heading to, Tom's Auto Glass. Right over, clearly.
It still blocks the sign, though.
Yeah, blocks the sign, but the name of the business is there. People are going to Tom's Auto Glass. They don't care about truck accessories. They know they sell truck accessories.
Well, last time he was here, he said what was more important was Z-Bart, because it was a Z-Bart...
I never said that.
No, but the owner did. So Z-Bart's going to be covered, which last time he was here, he said that was the most important part, was because Z-Bart wants their brand there. So Z-Bart's going to be blocked. So I look at the sign as it's in totality, the sign will be blocked in its current location. So that's all I'm saying. It's not a technicality, it's the truth. It will be blocked.
Mr. LaBelle?
We see it as a safety issue. Tom's Auto Glass has got to read, otherwise people are going to be turning around. We don't care about Z-Bart being legible. People are coming to Tom's Auto Glass because they know they offer, they're an old, they're an authorized Z-Bart dealer. They don't need to see it, they know it. The Tom's Auto Glass is what we need, visible.
You know, I'm certainly considering what Mr., what Brian had said. Now, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant the variance for the, the three-foot variance in the current sign location. And as part of my motion, I want to make you make it very clear that, that this sign will not be in any kind of a utility easement, because, you know, as we discussed before, there is overhead lines there, there is, there is an easement there. I want to make sure that we're not encroaching that utility easement. I'm not sure where that's at with your sign, because you haven't demonstrated it in your drawings, but I want to make that part of my motion, that it will not encroach the utility easement, the existing utility easements there.
Very well.
I'm going to paraphrase a few of these five items. Special circumstances and conditions. Because of the, the size of this property, the location, the, the way that the parking lot is configured, there is a need to, to allow the three-foot variance, because if you did move that sign over, it would be into the parking lot, and then trucks would hit it when they're passing by close to the curb. Strict enforcement of the provisions of this chapter would serve no, it doesn't, it doesn't serve any purpose at all. The type of sign structure, the location proposed would not pose a significant risk to the public health. With the location of that sign, I feel that it would be safer when somebody's pulling out of that parking lot, and if you did put it into that first spot, I would be concerned about people having that sign in their way and just scooting right out into Greshit and possibly getting in an accident. So I think that, that answers that question. The benefit of the sign to the general public, well, we've already, we've already discussed that, and a variance would not be in the interest, or would be in the interest of the township, not against any spirit of the intent of the chapter. We're, we're allowing a three-foot variance because of, because of special circumstances with the parking lot. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. LaBelle, supported by Mr. Leonard. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The third item this evening is B. It's Woodland Metals Site Plan 2023-20. Final review of the site condominium, R-1B, 10.54 acres, north of 24 Mile Road, east of SASS Road. The parcel ID is 15-09-10-004-006. Is the applicant present this evening? Would you please come to the podium? And Ms. Osborne, do you want to review Diffler's Webster's?
Sure. Thank you. So in your packets, you'll find two letters from us. I'll draw your attention to the one, they're both dated December 19th, 2023, but there's one with some red markup. So Jill had a conversation with someone from the applicant's team, and so there's some notes here that I think will make the, the review a little bit quicker and easier. So as a reminder, and I apologize because this was incorrect in our letter, the planning commission tonight can approve the site plan or choose to table it, or choose not to table it, does not go to the township board. In terms of the summary of findings on the first page of that letter, again, you can see where the applicant revised many of the items that we had already noted. So I'll come back to this in just a moment, but as a brief overview of the project, the applicant is proposing to build or put in 26 lots for single-family homes. The property is located north of 24 Mile Road, east of SASS Road, and the buildings will be a mix of one and two-story building homes with two car garages. So in our original review, there were a couple of outstanding items, including updating plans to meet the required lots for corner, widths for corner lots, which was revised. We made a note that the, the maximum length for the, for a cul-de-sac road was exceeded, but that's actually not an issue since it does have a connection to Dominic Drive, so it's, there is a cul-de-sac at the very end, but there's another way to access the site. The third item there was talking about building height, lot coverage, and previous coverage, and the applicant has noted that they'll comply with that during permitting. The fourth item is worth planning commission... Uh, the fourth item, uh, is worth Planning, uh, Commission discussion tonight. So the, um, required corner clearance for the lots on 24 Mile Road is 100 feet, and, um, the two lots there, uh, are 75 feet and 80 feet from, uh, the center line of 24 Mile Road, so they fall a little short. Um, there were two other lots, interior lots on wood crests, one on wood crests and one on Dominic Drive, that also didn't meet that requirement, but the applicant has said that they will, um, adjust so that those are the correct width. However, for the lots on 24 Mile Road, um, the, the question was if, uh, the 15-foot, uh, that's required for privacy screening can be included towards that 100-foot, uh, requirement. With that, they still fall a little short, because it would be a total of 90 feet and 95 feet from the center line, but that brings them much closer to compliance. Um, just a couple other quick notes, um, they updated their street trees, so, um, our other note on the first page, um, has been correct to show compliance. And then we noted as a courtesy that the, um, sign that they proposed would need to go through the sign permitting process and needed to be adjusted in terms of height and location, and they noted that they would do that at the time of that, um, application. So I'm happy to answer questions, and, um, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, any questions, uh, Mr. Demink?
I'm good.
Mr. Brokhardt?
I'll, I'll say.
Mr. Renaud?
No questions, just wanted to thank you for your submission, because I like when I get my review and it all says compliant. So thank you for making it easy.
Me too.
Mr. Carr?
Nope, nothing.
Mr. Jaworski?
Uh, no questions.
Mr. Klonowski?
I'm all set.
Mr. Leonard?
I'm all set as well.
Mr. LaBelle?
I'm fine with it, you're just, um, just in, uh, maybe a, um, an explanation as to why the cul-de-sac can be that long? Like, I guess my understanding of that is, is, um, because we've got that, um, the street coming off of there, so the fire department has an opportunity, and we do have a letter from the fire department approving the, um, reviewing it and approving it, because I noted that if, if in fact there was, the cul-de-sac was too long, you know, they might require sprinkling in the house, things of that nature, and, um, the fire department has not came back and required that, so with that, I don't have a problem with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, with that, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just one more thing to bring up, that, um, any motion to approve tonight should be subject to recording a storm water maintenance agreement that, uh, is reviewed and approved by the township attorney and, um, the township engineer.
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Woodland Meadows Site Plan 2023-20. It's the, uh, final s- review of the site condominium, R1B, 10.5 acres, north of 24 Mile Road, east of SAS Road. Parcel ID is 15-09-10-400-006. And, um, as Mr. Palin just spoke, uh, as part of the motion, that, um, it is subject to recording the string, the storm-water agreement, um, as part of this motion. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. LaBelle. Supported by Mr. Renaud. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item number seven is comments from the floor as permitted by the Commission on Non-Agenda Items. Number eight is non-agenda communications. Number nine is to receive and file all comments regarding agenda items. Number nine A is public comments. Anybody who would like to speak? If not? Go ahead.
Again, Mike Greener, Chesterfield. I think it's coming up. I was really impressed, and this is my first meeting, that we actually have like a, like answers to our questions. It was mentioned in the beginning that any questions that are posed in our comments, oftentimes our comments are more questions than comments. So I'm encouraged to know that, uh, that those questions will be answered. And I hope that what I'm going to bring up here is, um, something that the board does deal with, I'm not sure, so I'll give it a shot. Listening to the issues with the, uh, with the signing on Grashit. Senator Hertel has managed to get $5 million for Chesterfield Township for a, I don't remember exactly what the terminology is, but it's like a Grashit, uh, beautification, uh, program, $5 million bucks. And, um, I have one of his representatives, and I was hoping to have it today, but I don't, to give me a better idea of what that will include. So I was presuming that, uh, the Planning Commission would be dealing with that money and how it's going to be used. I mean, Grashit is pretty ugly, and to be able to have $5 million bucks to improve it, uh, I think would be terrific. So is that something that the, uh, Planning Commission would, uh, determine as suitable for the spending of that money? Is that correct? Or does that not-
Mr. Palin?
-come into your area of, uh, oversight?
That would be dependent on what it's for. I'm not aware of it. Uh, it's possible. So that depends if it's, you know, money for McComb County Department of Roads, if it's money for MDOT, if it's money for the township, so there's a lot that goes into it, so it very well could be, so I-
So, but you're not aware of it at this point. I know it's supposed to be sidewalks and various things, but I don't know exactly. I was hoping to know for tonight, but I didn't. But whatever it is, you will be reviewing that at some point in time, is that correct?
Again, it, it's a potential, I don't, I can't say for certain one way or the other.
Okay, well, I hope so. Anyway, I'm just glad to know that that's coming, because I think we really want to kind of clean up a little bit, look better. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Joe Katic, I live in Sutton. I'd only attended one Planning Commission meeting, and that was before the holidays, and it was the one that, uh, basically you guys were tasked to either approve or disapprove a sign on Paul Road that was going to be 90 feet tall, electronic and everything else. You knocked it down for good reason. And basically, I think it was planned that way, that essentially, person, supervisor person, didn't go by the APO. He signed an agreement with the company long before it ever came to, to prove it. Should have been through the board and then a public hearing, and then out for bid. He went the other way around. He didn't even have an open bid. Anyway, it's come up, and I think Mr. Seibert can verify now, the company that they signed the approval with is back either in court for either compensation or to get negotiations on changing the variances on the sign. And is that going to come ba- is that going to come back before them, or is it going to, you know? So you guys got completely knocked out of the picture with, you know, not doing your job. Does this ever happen before? Have you ever had something come through that was knocked down because the supervisor did something that he shouldn't have done and got a variance or got a, whatever he got from the board to do this? Has this ever happened before? That, you know, like this, it'll come back? It won't come back to you, apparently now. Supervisor just completely locked you guys out of the picture to get what he wanted. Does anybody recall anything like that happening?
No.
Nothing? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I, can I just cl- clarify the record for a minute? Because I, there may be some misunderstanding as to what this lawsuit is about. As you will recall, when the sign variances came before the commission, there were approximately, there were five at least variances, or may have been six, but there were five. The commission, uh, approved one of the variances, which was, I think, was a landscaping variance, and you denied for specific reasons on the record the other, we'll call them five, height, width, size, location, et cetera. The, um, applicant filed a lawsuit in McComb County Circuit Court challenging the Planning Commission's decision. That is a review on the record. It's not a traditional lawsuit where there's witnesses called and there's discovery, and you try it before a judge or a jury. This is an appeal on the record, so the record before this commission is certified, which it has been. It is sent to the judge. The judge sets a briefing schedule where both sides submit briefs to the court. The court will then schedule oral arguments by the lawyers only, and then at the conclusion of the oral arguments, the judge will make a decision, and it will be a determination as to whether or not the Planning Commission's decision was based, the standard is called, whether it was based on competent material and substantial evidence on the record, which means in layman's terms, was there a good reason for your decision? That's all that's before the court. Nothing else. There's no money damage claims, there's no, uh, it doesn't have anything to do with the lease. It has to do with whether or not your decision was made on an adequate record and whether it was sustainable. That's it. And at some point, the judge will make that determination unless it's, the case is resolved otherwise. So that's what it's about.
Thank you. Committee reports, ordinance amendments, board liaison reports, reviews, and discussions for members of the commission, consultants, and township employees. Uh, Planner's Report, is that Cole?
Happy New Year, everybody. Uh, for those of you who didn't meet, um, Cole Ferfinski, he, um, it joined Giffords Webster at the beginning of the year, and, um, will be joining Jill and I here in Chesterfield. So, um, please say hello if you haven't, but good to see you all. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner comments? Mr. Demink?
Thank you, guys, for all being here, and it's 2024, and, uh, we'll see what the year brings us. I'm sure there'll be a lot coming across our plate on different items, and, uh, we'll see where we end up. Thank you again for your time and support.
Thank you. Mr. Brokhardt?
I'm okay, thank you.
Mr. Renaud?
I'm all set, other than, um, I may not be available, well, actually, I will not be available for the February 20th Planning Commission meeting, in the event that we have it, because the township might take that date, uh, the Township Board. If they do, then don't worry about it, but if they don't, I will not be here.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Carr?
Nothing. Have a good night.
Thank you. Mr. Jaworski?
I want to break the trend. No, I want to address the, uh, the audience about, it was, uh, good to get your questions answered. I want to bring it back to the board. I think you guys did a great job today, kind of educating the audience on what goes down at these board meetings. It's not necessar- or Planning Commission meetings, I'm sorry. Uh, it's not necessarily a debate. It's kind of a listening time where you absorb everything from the community, take that into consideration with what the applicant is proposing or asking for. And then we decide. So tonight, I made a two-week, I like the two weeks, vote on it in two weeks, because it gives us time to absorb everything and really think about our position, so. But I also want to say, also, from the audience perspective, this is not a debate. This is just a listening. This is the community coming together to talk about our community, what works, what doesn't, what you want to see, what is in line with our, our Township plan, which we spent a lot of time on. Nothing's always, nothing's etched in stone. If everything was just based on the books, we wouldn't have to be here. So there's give and take on both sides, and we hope as a group that we absorb everything that you say and apply it to the best for the community. So, safety, our residents, and for the business folks. We have to make this an attractive place to do business, because if we don't, businesses won't come. Businesses don't pay taxes. That supports us as well. So, thank you for the time, have a good night.
Mr. Klonowski? Mr. Leonard? Mr. LaBelle?
Looking for, um, volunteers for pre-planning for the next meeting. Rich McCord and Carl?
Mr. Carr and Carl?
No, Rich McCord.
Okay. Yeah, okay, I got it. If no one else has anything to discuss, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn at 8:04. We have a motion by Mr. Miller, supported by Mr. Renaud. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.